Call the meeting to order. Those willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda with additions of letter of resignation from Wendy Weber, second grade teacher, letter of resignation from Rachel Walz, fifth grade teacher, and the letter of resignation from Sarah Landine, middle school, high school, social worker? Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Randy, do I have a second?
Second.
Amy. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the agenda with the additions signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign.
Aye.
Katie? Motion passes. Move on to number four. Is there any public forum, Deb?
Joan Stowe. I'm just here to talk about with, we have quite a few resignations happening and have had some long-term employees resign over during the school year, pares, janitors, support people. And I would hope that you are doing an exit interview, and if not, I would ask that maybe you contact them and ask them, why are they resigning? I think the lack of discipline in this building is getting beyond out of control. And we need to address it. And our little arrow green piece of paper, it's like the Willy Wonka golden ticket, and that's how it's being viewed. And at some point, we need to take back this building.
Anybody have any questions for Joan? Any questions? Okay. Hearing none. Anybody else for public forum, Deb?
No.
Move on to number five, presentation. Nothing there. Okay. Move on to number six, consent agenda. Is there anything anybody wishes to have removed from the consent agenda for discussion or discussion on the consent agenda? Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, then I would like to recognize Pipestone Publishing Company Incorporated donation of $1,345 to the Athletic Help Fund for the spring poster. 6.3.2 Booster Arrow Booster Club donation of $100 to the National Honor Society. 6.3.3 Pipestone Area Friends of the Library donation of $491.44 to the Minders Community Library. 6.3.4 Pipestone Area Friends of the Library donation of $330.99 to the Minders Community Library for 2022 Minnesota Book Award books. And then 6.3, there's a whole list. These are for the robotics team. 6.3.5 Double D Gravel Incorporated donation of $200. Whip's Auto Sales, $30 donation. John Whipple Agency, $70 donation. Darville Foods of Pipestone, $250 donation. Christensen Broadcasting, $100 donation. Dr. Paul Hendrickson, a $50 donation. Utopian Paradise LLC, a $200 donation. Midland Tire, a $200 donation to Aerobots. And I would also like to thank the following employees for their time in service to our district. Sophia Toms, FFA and AG teacher. Zachary Poyer, choir and general music teacher. And a couple of letter of resignations for longer-term employees. Wendy Weber, second grade teacher. She had us for 23 years, we had her. Rachel Walz, fifth grade teacher. She was employed here five years. And Sarah Landine, our middle school, high school social worker of the year. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Brad, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Hearing none. Motion passes. We'll move on to financials. 7.1 Review Elementary Budget, Building Budget Year-to-Date. Jackie?
We're currently at $316,073 that we have left over. Cross Anderson has paid out the retainage, so that is complete.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
What do we got left that still has to be covered? Or is everything?
The final three contractors have been signed off by Cross Anderson.
Okay.
I believe they were in over the Easter break and got their work done. So they've been signed off. So that's kind of the end of the contractors. We have about, like Jackie said, over $300,000, but we've got those summer projects. So the bottom line comes down to about $107,000. I know that the elementary leadership team has got a list of some things that we're prioritizing and looking at, so we'll kind of continue to work through that and see where things go.
Okay. Any questions for Jackie on the elementary building budget year-to-date? Any questions? Okay. Hearing none. That's a non-action item. Move on to 7.1.1 Review New Elementary Building Bills. Anybody have questions on those?
Those are the three contracts.
Yep. Any questions? Hearing none. That also is a non-action item. We'll move on to 7.1.2 Approve Treasurers' Report for Elementary Building Bond. Jackie?
Just a reconciliation of the checking account. This has $450,000, but some of the transfers after these were paid are not reflected in that ending figure yet. Eventually, they will all tie out.
Okay. Any question?
I'll move to approve the building bond treasurer's report.
Okay.
Second.
Did you get that too? Yep. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor to approve the treasurer's report for the elementary building bond signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Hearing none. Motion passes. 7.2 Review of Budget Year-to-Date. Jackie?
We're currently at 71%. Last year at this time, we were at 69%. Everything looks like it's in order.
Okay. Are there any questions on the budget year-to-date? Any questions? Hearing none. That's a non-action item. 7.3 Approve the Treasurer's Report for March. Jackie?
Okay. Cash balance, $7.5 million. Last year at this time, it was like $7.3 million. This is just basically, I reconcile all the checking accounts and make sure everything ties out.
Yep.
Because of cash balance.
Okay. Are there any questions of Jackie for the treasurer's report? Any questions? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report for March? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor to approve the treasurer's report for March signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Hearing none. Motion passes. 7.4 Approve Regular Bills for April. Does anybody have questions on the bills for April?
I saw that there's two for Tahoe, both consult and service fees for February of 2022. One for $74,000 and some change, and one for $84,000. Is that normal?
They're not both for February, one probably should be March.
Okay. All right.
Probably the second one is March.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve the regular bills for April?
So moved.
Second.
Get them, Deb? Okay. All those in favor of approval of the regular bills for April signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Hearing none. Motion passes. 7.5 Approve High School Activity Bills for April. Does anybody have any questions on the high school activity bills? Any questions? Okay. Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve the high school activity bills for April?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor to approve the high school activity bills for April signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Hearing none. Motion passes. Move on to number eight, the Board Forum and Information. 8.1 Board Reports and Updates. Does any board member wish to give updates on any committee meetings that they may have had?
Policy committee met, went through quite a few different policies. Most of it was just language stuff.
I'm bringing them all forward here tonight for one reading, right?
Yeah, they're all one reading.
Okay. Anybody else? You want to?
I'd like to discuss the cell phone policy. And I'd like to put that on the agenda for next meeting. I think we need to look at it, and I think we need to come up with a plan to get the cell phones out of the classrooms.
Yeah, I would agree.
Either we create boxes or bins when they walk in the door and they put them in. And we need to set up a discipline policy if they don't follow it. But I'd like that for the agenda for next month.
Okay. Anything else? We did meet again with the city last week, Thursday, right? Yeah. Had a very good meeting. We had previously presented a copy of a draft that our legal team had put together, and they were very receptive to everything. They wanted some clarification on stuff, so we're going to get that. But I think we're getting pretty close. We could have a deal hammered out pretty shortly. I would think in the next couple of months, myself, but...
Good.
This was by and far the most productive meeting we've had yet. Yep.
Good.
So, Katie? Anybody else?
I just wanted to thank, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Don Snyder for the favorite educator banquet last week.
Yep.
It was such a great event and be able to honor so many of our educators and the phenomenal job they do. So just really enjoyed that event.
By far, one of my favorite events that we do, I mean that we participate in.
Mm-hmm. It's always been fun. It's nice to be back in person this year.
Right, yes, to your hiatus there, so.
Yep.
Negotiations will be meeting with the support staff.
Yep.
Starting negotiations on a contract Thursday.
Thursday night, we do.
And then the facility maintenance committee is, the city has asked to meet with the school district to talk about soccer fields and concession stands and things, so wondering if there's any interest. So the committee was going to kind of, and they meet this week also, so.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, I believe.
4:30.
So we'll sit down and hear what they have to say and what they're, so that's kind of going on too for that committee.
Okay. Anything else?
That's the only things I have.
Okay. That's non-action item. We'll move on to administrative, administrators' reports. 9.1 Superintendent's Board Report. Kevin?
Enrollment is stable. One more student this month than last month. We are entering the final month of the school year, so lots of things going on. Weather's been cooperative for school. I don't know how cooperative it's been for sports, but we're coming into May, so things will kind of really start to, there'll be a lot of stuff going on here. Got prom this weekend, so, you know, Mr. Strasser's probably going to report on the prom plans. Or not, I don't know. So that's kind of where things are at. The legislature, I'm not really sure what's going to come out of there. Been doing a lot of talking, and I don't know how much decision-making they're going to make because they really don't need to. So they have a large surplus, and they could give, they're talking about trying to help out with special ed cross-subsidy, but there isn't a whole lot of, I don't know what'll go on for education so much for us, so.
Okay.
But we've got a few more weeks of that left too, so we'll see what happens here over the next month.
Okay. Any questions for Kevin? Any questions? Hearing none, then we will move on to 9.2 Principal's Board Report. Mr. Strasser.
Hello, everyone. Yes, it is prom weekend, so we have a lot of, you know, that's just a good activity for our kids. I think plans are pretty well set. We'll start the decoration process on Thursday evening and carry that into the weekend. So prom advisors have done a good job of planning and putting those pieces together. It's also a big week. We have our MCA tests kicking off on Wednesday, so two pieces at the high school since we're doing our 10th grade reading and 11th grade math at the same time is, our ninth graders are going to take some time, go down to Southeast Tech as part of just some exposure to the college career readiness field. And our seniors will do a virtual learning day, a day, so we can focus on our tests in our building and get that going in a good direction. I feel that our teachers have done a great job getting kids ready. We've had some good plans over the last month from a preparation standpoint and being careful not to just inundate kids with preparing for tests, but to make sure they have the skills necessary to perform their best. So that's what we've emphasized, is putting your best effort out there. It's been a consistent message. And when you look at the high school, we've utilized our prime time for some of our 10th grade reading support and also moving from the ACT to the 11th grade math just as refreshers. So those little things that try to keep everybody, you know, thinking about test strategies because that's a lot of what goes into MCA tests. So we've done a lot of that stuff here in the last month, and yeah, I think we're excited to see where we end up. So those are the main things that I was going to report on, unless you have a question.
Any questions for Cory? Any questions? Okay. Hearing none. We'll move on to 9.3 Curriculum of, or Director of Curriculum Teaching and Learning Board Report. Melanie?
Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Strasser said, it is MCA test week. Woo-hoo! The beginning of it. Wednesday, our third through eighth graders and 10th graders will take their reading test, and like Mr. Strasser said, our 11th graders will take their math test. So it's been interesting in my brain to put reading and math together in one day, but it's working. And then the following week, we'll do the same with the middle school, and then three through eight will take the math. And then May 11th, the fifth through eighth, or fifth, eighth, and high school will take their science test. So we have a little bit of testing going on. So if I don't reply to your email immediately, that's why. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Move on to number 10, Discussion Items. Nothing there. Number 11, Board Action Items. 11.1 Retirement of Deb Anderson, high school math teacher. Deb's taught here for 22 years. Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. Strasser.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Mrs. Anderson. It's been a privilege on my end to have worked with her for the last 12 years, and she has done a tremendous job getting our students through the, specifically pre-calculus, college algebra, and calculus, and ready for the next piece at the university level. I think our kids come out of here in large part because of the work she's done with them more than ready, and in a lot of respects, more excelled than a lot of other kids, and we've heard those comments consistently over the years. So just very, very, very happy that she's a part of our district and the work that she did for us, so.
Yep. And from the board's standpoint too, I mean, we wish her well in her retirement and thank her for her 22 years of service to our district. So can I have a motion to accept the retirement letter from Deb Anderson?
So moved.
Second.
Randy and Amy. All those in favor of accepting the retirement letter from Deb Anderson, high school math teacher, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Hearing none. Motion passes. 11.2 Retirement Letter from Tony Cunningham, elementary ML teacher. She has been with the district 13 years.
Can you handle this one too?
I can say, yeah. I'll have the honor of thanking Mrs. Cunningham for her support. She is always willing to bend over and do whatever it takes to help our English learners, our youngest English learners acquire language, and I think it's very evident in our access scores, the work that she does is very helpful for our students. And she always has a smile, and she always makes sure that kids have a snack or something, whatever they need. So I'll miss working with her, especially during access testing time. We got to pack boxes for the past five years together and make sure that we had what we needed, and so she was always, you know, ready and willing to collaborate with me and work along with that, so.
Okay.
Thank her for her service.
I think she's always kind of worked with students who, you know, are new or, I think she worked in the alternative program when that was here, and so she's kind of had that spot in her heart for students, and I really do appreciate that.
Yep. Yes. And from the board, again, thank you for your service to the district, Tony. It's very much appreciated. So may I have a motion for the retirement of Tony Cunningham, elementary ML teacher?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor to accept the retirement letter from Tony Cunningham, elementary ML teacher, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Hearing none. Motion passes. 11.3 Early Dismissal on Last Day of School, June 2nd, 2022.
We have the, we're hosting the section track meet that day, and it starts at 2:00, and I believe there's 1:00 prep coaches' meetings, and so, and we have about 15 staff members that work the track meet, and it's the last day of school, so we felt like it just seemed to make sense that let's dismiss it noon. I know when we make our calendar, I would like to probably figure out something so you don't have to make this change now, but with everything and new AD and just, it just, it just kind of one of those where, hey, we've got this on the last day of school, and what are we going to do with? We really weren't interested in chasing kids around for a couple hours, so I think it seems to make sense to just dismiss it noon on that date, and that'll be the end of the school year for us.
Okay. Are there any questions from anybody? Any questions? The only thing I would is make sure all the staff gets the memo ASAP, as well as out to the parents of students. Then we're just over a month ahead on that then. Okay? So may I have a motion to approve the early dismissal on last day of school of June 2nd at noon?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of approval of the early dismissal on last day of school, June 2nd at noon, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Hearing none. Motion passes. 11.4 Approval of the 22-23 School Calendar.
We read this last month, and one of the changes was the moving the early dismissals on Wednesdays to 2:00. So feedback we did get is there are a few Wednesdays where we didn't dismiss, like when we'd come back from the winter on Janu, it's, we'd come back on Tuesday, and with a Wednesday, we thought we would be able to just have a full day that day. And I believe also, it's the Wednesday right before we go on break, so we just thought it seemed like those two, and there might have been one other day where we'd come back from a break, and when you have that, it's, again, we hear about class time and getting back into routines and wrapping things up, so we recommend that calendar, that's where that's at. Otherwise, we haven't had a whole lot of the feedback.
I see you have the snow makeup days on it now.
Yeah, we did get those on there too.
Okay.
Not sure where they went the first time, but...
Okay. Are there any questions on the 22-23 school calendar? Any questions? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve the 22-23 school calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approval of the 22-23 school calendar signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign.
Aye.
Okay. Got that? Okay. Motion passes. Okay. 11.5 Approved Policies. 205 on up. Kevin, you want to address these?
I'll just take us through them. I know there's 22 of them. The policy committee appreciate you grinding through these, so there are no major changes. Most of these are just a few words, a statute, and in some of them, we haven't reviewed for about five years, so it's just, it's good to keep these in front of you and looking at them. So I'll just briefly go through the policies, and the committee recommends one reading for these. So Policy 205 is open meetings and closed meetings. Basically, that's just as a reminder that the board conducts its business in the open, and you meet here. Closed meetings are for very specific things for privacy and stuff when we're dealing with students and staff or employees, so, but there were no significant changes there. Policy 206 is in regards to public participation in school board meetings, complaints about persons at school board meetings, and data privacy considerations. Again, no significant changes here, just a few minor statutory references and stuff like that, so. And we do have for open forum, as you know, which is allowable, but you don't have to do it, but we do have that. Policy 211 is criminal or civil action against a school district, school board member, employee, or student. We need to have this. We do carry liability insurance for these types of things, and that we do, the school district will cover any liability things that are going on. Policy 305 is a policy implementation. Basically, it's the responsibility of the superintendent to implement board policies, and the administration develops procedures and guidelines to do that. Again, no major changes there. Policy 414 is mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. All of our staff are mandated reporters. We give usually refreshers on, on all of that, and principals are usually the ones that get involved if there's things that are going on in that area. Uh, policy 419 is a tobacco-free environment, uh, prohibiting the possession and use of tobacco, tobacco-related devices and electronic delivery devices, vaping awareness and prevention instructions, and, uh, I would say that I appreciate their Pipestone Coalition, they do a lot with, uh, vaping has been kind of a thing that they've been helping out in addition to the alcohol, uh, knowledge. Uh, policy 423, 423 is in regards to employee-student relationships. Uh, this policy sets up what are proper relationships between all school district employees and students, no major changes there or any at all, hardly. Uh, policy 427 is in regards to work, work, workload limits for certain special education teachers. Uh, the state requires schools to carry this policy, um, and so this policy is where it states that we will, we don't set any specific limits, it's worked out between the, um, administration and special ed administration. Policy 477 is the school vehicle use policy, this is where you get into, you gotta have a licensed driver and schools can't drive or, or students can't drive our school vehicles, and that's where that's at. Policy 479, no changes there, that was the employee use of social media, this is our guidelines for our employees and their use of social media. Policy 480 is our employee retirement recognition policy. Um, we do, uh, recognize, um, staff who retire from zero to 19 years of service with a plaque, and then over 20 years, uh, we have that engraved clock, so we, we do give that out every year. We've got a few probably, we're gonna have quite a recognition, cause I don't think we got, the last couple of years with COVID, we didn't do much, so we might have to go back here and make sure we get everybody. Uh, policy 516 is student medication, uh, this just goes through and has all the expectations for students who need to take medication here at school through the school nurse. Policy 519 is in regards to interviews of students by outside agencies. If students are, uh, interviewed by, uh, law enforcement or other types of, um, state groups, they have to, we have to give them access to that, so, that's where that's at. Policy 521 is student disability nondiscrimination, again, um, they did have a lot of changes, but they got very prescriptive with our investigative procedures, and if we ever really get into anything, we probably would just contact or contract with their little legal counsel to do the investigation, they've made it pretty complex and probably better off having a, an attorney do it. Policy 523, seems like we do this one every year, it updates policies incorporated by reference, so several were, uh, removed from that. Policy 532 is our policy in regards to use of a peace officer and crisis teams to remove students with an IEP from school grounds because of the special education, you have to have a special policy in regards to using a police officer and following those procedures for, uh, anything. Basically, it's easier if, if we do it ourselves than get law enforcement involved. Uh, policy, um, 550 is our student acceleration to a higher level, like, um, activities policy. Um, Mr. Zolner came, we had really a pretty good discussion on this policy, wondering if we still need this, I think it's a nice guideline to have, so we are keeping it in there, um, as it is, and we didn't make any recommended changes, and there are some forms. Probably the one thing is, probably could do, I think he said the forums, he didn't know if he always had the forums signed up, but a lot of times are, we're maybe trying to fill for a game or two, um, but that was just good discussion, I don't know, you guys. That was one we talked about the most, so. Policy 603 is curriculum development, um, this is where the, um, superintendent is responsible for curriculum drill, uh, development, uh, and, um, like I said, standards have kinda taken this over, so we, we usually are looking for whatever the standards are in implementation of them. Policy 608, instructional services in special education, it says that we will provide special education services to students who qualify. Policy 611 is the homeschooling policy, um, this is, basically states the rights of homeschool students, that they can take part in different activities, uh, they can take classes with us, um, and how all that works, so nothing significant there, um, but we do have that, I don't know if everybody knows that. Uh, policy 709 is the student transportation safety policy, um, again, no changes here, but I did want us to review, we are getting a multi-function activity bus that will be coming probably this summer, so that'll be something new. Uh, right now for, um, an employee to transport a student, you gotta go through the type three training. They will now have to do a similar training for multi-function activity buses, but they still can have that class D license, so you can have a regular driver's license and drive that, that, that'll carry up to 14 passengers, so it's a little mini-bus, it's a little bit bigger. I have spoken, Ludols will provide the training, uh, again, it's, it's all about understanding the vehicle, how it works, uh, and making sure that you know how to check that thing over and how to operate it, so. We're, we're, we're in good order there. And then, uh, policy 750 is our general fund balance policy, our fund balance policy, the, the budget finance committee reviews, and they haven't given any recommended changes, our, our policy is, um, for a 25 to 34 percent, um, fund balance policy for where we're at, so. Those are the policies that were reviewed and recommended to the board for full approval.
Okay, are there any questions from anybody?
I had one question. On policy 477, the school vehicles?
Yes.
And the student aspect of that, does that include the summer, the students that are signed, that, that were using for summer help?
If, they have to have a valid driver's license if they're going to drive any vehicles, but we really don't like them driving vehicles, but there are times when they have to, but usually there's a, uh, an adult with them, a custodian or, or technology staff, so usually they don't, I'm not gonna say it never happens, but it, um, should be very limited.
Okay.
Does that go with our policy then?
Which one number was that?
477. Maybe we can look into it too.
Right.
This is all about governing the, the employee's use and they have to have their licenses and stuff, so that's why the summer when they're employees, but.
Right, and that's why I asked if it, if it, if it changes, like their classification.
When they're an employee.
Right.
But, still limited, I, we're not a big fan of.
Okay.
But it can happen if they, but they do know. Like I said, Stuteville has, they used to be traveling between buildings, but Dee doesn't have to do that anymore, so then it kinda comes down to custodians, and they're usually, again, driving around campus and you've got lawn mowers and stuff, so.
Right, okay.
I think last year they drove the truck, the older truck every, cause we were moving things between the buildings too. Otherwise, I don't recall students really. Would that fall under, um, let's see, three school-owned vehicle usage and then, is it I, the, the vehicle shall not be used for any of the following prohibited uses, operation by an unauthorized driver, wouldn't they be an authorized driver in that?
Right.
Okay, are there any other questions? Any questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the, uh, updated policies?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor to approve the updated policies signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have? Amy? Okay. Yep. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes.